Hi, so Christine.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve. Joanne.
Yeah.
Seth.
Mary.
Yep.
Matt. We have this four.
So to turn your microphones on, there's that rectangle button at the bottom.
Yep.
Steve.
And then there should be some numbers once it's on. Good? Okay, thank you.
Oh.
You gotta use it though a little bit.
Okay. Um, let's hear, consent agenda approval of minutes, uh, for July seven to five, that's time for motion.
Yep.
Motion, July seventh.
Paul Sucker.
Joanne.
Yes.
Bailey. Say both. Say none. It's our. Alright, we're gonna open up the public hearing, the, uh, planning and development at seven oh one. Anybody have anything they want to say? Public. Not seeing any, I'm not moving the floor as the public hearing yet. Seven oh one. Right, on old business, preliminary plan for nineteen twelve revised.
You have to tell them.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so.
I should turn the light.
There was a request, um, by the planning and zoning numbers, uh, they agreed to approve the preliminary plan with the conditions of the five additional parking spaces, uh, to meet the ordinance requirements and the various, the variances that were listed. Um, the revised preliminary plan has fifteen additional parking spaces, uh, for a total of a hundred and ten parking spaces. All state engineer, uh, and or out, our all state engineers, um, and planner, uh, they commented that everything had been addressed, um, with what he was looking for, um, and the, uh, up, everything's been addressed in the updated preliminary plan from a power engineer. And, and with, um, them addressing those other, uh, variance options, um, uh, there will not be a variance required. Kind of background with that. Anybody have any questions?
Breakments, going.
So all the setbacks and everything, that's all, I think, but they were gonna go to the board.
Correct, they are not, they're, they're, they address all of those, and if you look at your new preliminary plan there, they've addressed their, all of, all three of those various requests that they had mentioned.
And there was the removal of one of the lots, so.
Yeah.
They removed one to allow for more room.
Space. Right.
And the applicant and the engineers are here, so if you have questions for them.
So you have any questions?
Is there anything you want to add?
Okay.
It's will, uh, I am. But on us.
Sure.
Also, say it. Please. No second?
All second.
Alright. Everybody, uh, say I for approve?
I am.
Sorry.
So the motion was to, uh, send it to, approving it, except to the board with recommendations to whatever.
Yep, your, your approval sends it to the Board of Alderman with your recommendation, so by, by approving it tonight, you are recommending the Board of Alderman approve the, or wait.
No, nothing go to preliminary, sorry. You're, you're approving the plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It does not go to the board call.
Okay.
Anybody have something to sign? Five minute?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have Joanne. And then who's second, Seth? Okay. Okay.
Anybody votes? Saying none? It is approved. To you all. Alright, let's go to the P U D zoning redefine and clarification of chapter fifty.
So the, um, version that's in your packet should be, um, has all of the attorney revisions and things like that that we went over at our last meeting. We decide, at the last meeting, we kind of collectively decided to bring it back with the format of a public hearing, since we made so many revisions in that timeframe, so, you know, we went over all the different changes from the attorney and I implemented those into the ordinance, so tonight, if upon your approval, approval would be like we were just talking about, recommendation to the Board of Alderman for their approval on Monday.
Go to the. That first one?
We don't have to actually approve it, it didn't. No, we have to approve it.
Yeah, we, sorry. We'll have to do the motion in a second. Yep.
Yeah, motion.
I'm gonna check it up.
Just don't break up the two here.
Well, I sat down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, ever.
So, all my favorite.
Are you the second?
I was the second.
Okay.
This time.
You guys are throwing me off.
Uh, any opposition, anybody opposed? Saying none? The motion hasn't passed. We'll do this.
Sorry, nope.
No, I'm.
Sorry.
We'll go, uh. Business.
Mm-hmm. No better.
So discussion. Meeting time change?
Yes, so the Board of Alderman recently moved their meetings to six o'clock from seven o'clock, so I was curious if you guys were interested in doing the same thing.
Looks like moon A.
The intention is that they would be done an hour earlier as well.
Hold. Work. Wait, I'm, so. Yes, I do that too, and that's just. I have my time, I'll move back in, got. On their stuff to the steps.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay.
So, do we need to motion that?
Um, no, I think I, I, just with your direction, we'll have to do an ordinance change, but I don't think that ordinance change will come to you guys, it'll go to the boards, so. And we'll let you know, uh, when your next meeting is, if it is approved by then, we should be, the next meeting should be six. Okay. Okay. Alright, so I gave you guys quite a few different packets here. Um, the purpose of those packets was primarily to show you the, um, primarily to show you the examples. So. So in the proper order that you guys should have them in front of you, um, the top one is Odessa's current zoning code.
So just to go over that real quick, so some of you guys had the pleasure of getting to do this, um, more than once, and some of you guys are getting to do it for the first time, so I, we had kind of a preliminary conversation about it last time, um, about the direction that we're still wanting to go as a commission here, um, but I just wanted to kind of bring us back all to the same page and, um, work towards the improvements that we were trying to make. So, one of the things I wanted to show you with is how our code is set up. So the one I wrote Odessa code should be on this top of your stack. That is directly from our code of ordinances and has, uh, the, the chart at the beginning, so that kind of shows you the, the tiered system that we have. It starts with R one, and because we have the cumulative zoning, so anything that curves in R one is able to be done in R two. A- anything in R two is able to be done in R three, and then that continues on, so anything in R one, two, or three can go in C one. Anything in R one, two, three, C one, can go in C two. So I wanted to show you this, cause I feel like it gives you a little bit more of a goal perspective of what we're talking about and what, shows you what it looks like in our actual code and how we, how a code is written, so you can see how it's building upon itself. So if you open to the next page, I've highlighted the uses permitted, so we're working towards building a use table that would map this out in kind of a visual structure as opposed to the written language that we have in our current code. So the first one, fifty dash five, six, is what's permitted for single family. And then there's uses permitted upon review, which is what we consider to be conditional use permit.
These are only going up, they can't go down, right?
Yeah, so, uh, what's in, what's listed in R one, that's the only thing that can be built in R one, so you can do, um, a one detached, single family dwelling, attached or detached accessory building, including a private garage or storage building, home occupation, daycare, which is the limited version of the daycare, um, but personal garden, serving a single family dwelling on the same lot. And then there's the uses permitted, so, um, if someone was wanting to put a plant nursery in single family, they would need to come to planning and zoning and get your permission to do so.
You know, in that garage and that storage building, that's, that's speculated as certain sizes, certain height, certain width, the whole thing, alright.
Yep, elsewhere in the code, just a little further down, it'll explain what the sizes are, what sizes are allowed within, um, R one. So then if you flip a couple pages in, we have a, we have different sizes for single family, so that's what your, um, R one A, R one B, R one D, R one E, and then we get to R two, which is two family dwelling district, which, um, starts on page ten, if you can find that. So then where the building upon itself comes into play is under fifty dash two, two, one, on page eleven. Uh, for R two, it lists, uh, the very first one, it lists is any uses permitted in R one, single family are allowed in R two. And that trend continues on, so if you go to R three on the next page, so the first one that's listed under R three is any uses permitted in an R two district. And so that just continues on and on and on, so on and so forth, until you get to I, where you can have residential, commercial, anything. The, uh, most restricted would be ag, which you're only, oh, there's, you can only do the things that are listed in ag.
But as they move up, if they just might want to go to outs, and say, uh, I don't know, commercial property or something, it'd be regulated by the commercial property statutes and what they can do in setback and all that, right?
Correct.
Wouldn't be going through the.
Correct. Which that can be good or it can be bad, because if you're building, say, an R three, which would be a multi-family apartment complex, but you're building it on a commercial lot, your requirements are, um, lesser because it's a commercial lot, not a R three lot. So for example, the setbacks can be setback to zero because it's a commercial, the, the zone commercially.
Yeah, sort of.
But R three, the setbacks are not zero, which makes sense, because in reality, people are still living there, there should be an aspect of a yard, no matter what that, that, that ends up looking like. So I just wanted to give you guys that, so you could see how we're building upon ourselves here, and then, um, the, the one that looks like. Back in the style, I think it did, would have been the last thing I handed out, and it's our actual, um, it says use table and it's set landscape. So this is the one that we had started working on, um, some of you were there to participate in that, that we put the different zones up on the wall. We had the, the different uses cut out on pieces of paper, we were able to have a discussion on each use and, and then put those in the perspective, um, tables. So we're still needing to build this out, is really what we're, we're still needing to accomplish. Uh, that's where the homework comes in, because it's taking us a little longer than, um, we have really to go through each use individually. Um, so I wanted to, I guess, make a request that, um, you guys work on those and then send them to us, and we can compile the information and bring you a completed use table for further discussion. Would that be okay? And then I also, the rest of your stack of papers here, so I know it's a lot, but I wanted to provide you with, um, example use tables from other communities, so, um, the first one you should have is Lee Summit, so they have a use table. Uh, and everyone's gonna look a little bit different, everyone's categories are a little bit different. Um, some use different acronyms and different letters to, to explain what, like where we just have R one, R two, or three, C one, C one, C, whatever, so on and so forth, uh, each one's a little bit different, so I tried to provide that information if it wasn't obvious, so the first one's Lee Summit. The next one is Oak Grove, which is where we got our uses from, that we were using to build our table. And then you have Higginsville, City of Higginsville's use table, tends to attach with their different acronyms listed, so you'll see like ag for us is just A, ag for Higginsville is A G, then they have S F one, S F two, S F three, which is single family, one, two, or three, they have a multi-family residential, which is acronym is M R. So they have different categories, but still achieving the same thing. And then lastly, we have the City of Lexington and their use table. So I felt like those would be helpful to you, uh, before we were really just looking at Oak Grove as an example. Uh, so I wanted you guys to have other examples to be able to compare to. When, the first time we started doing this, we were doing it without the example at all, we were just trying to build it ourselves. Um, but I think it helps to be able to have multiple to compare to, to see, you know, where, what categories are they putting multi-family in? Or what categories are they putting, um, dog candles in, you know, whatever it is, you can check from these different cities and kind of make your best judgment on where you feel it's necessary. But the idea behind it is similar to what we've already done, so back to the one we kind of need to fill out here. Um, so when we did this prior to, for assisted living, that being the first one, we collectively decided that it would make the most sense for that to be in R three, C one, and C two. Um, so, Seth, I want to check in with you, because you weren't here for the whole, whole process that we've done thus far, so is that making sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright. Um, for another example that we did was duplexes, we said that could be done in R two and R three. So current code today would tell us that assisted living could be in R three, C one, C two, C three, I one, I two. Duplex can be in R two, R three, C one, C two, C three, I one, I two. So. Any thoughts?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to do this here.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay, that's fair.
Because having the profit of all of us.
Mm-hmm.
Talking it over is better than us thinking it up.
Yep, that's fair, that's fair. My thought was to try, I was trying to accomplish a, a baseline for us to start with, and then, uh, we can come back and kind of look at them line by line and see if it makes sense, but I understand what you're saying, and I, I don't disagree with you. We'll just, we can just start going from there, that's what you guys plan to do.
Well, that's the other one, that's just.
Any thoughts?
I understand.
Have a discussion on it, I, I, if you want us to just do it for us to bring back and then go over line by line, that's fine. But I still want to go over it line by line.
Yes, that was kind of my thought too. It's kind of six, one half of that's in the other, it's just, it felt time consuming when we had the like full, well, discussion on one, kind of had the way where they should go, but it would be the same thing, I would just.
Now, I've already thought it through in our heads, and then we can say why we thought it through, and maybe it'll go faster.
That's fair.
I, I agree, go ahead, filling it out, but then coming back, going over again, saying. Good everybody. Markers just like, hi.
And then I can, I can compi- compile what I, that I received from everyone and plug that in based on what the majority is saying. That's my thought. Do we want to go through some of them now, just to get back in the notion of it?
You know what? I, I still have one thing about changing these. Like I've said before, a lot of people who invested in property with a mind to do something with it, now may not be able to do that, and how that will affect people. And I know in the past, a while back, when we went through this, they kept saying it's a verbiage change, but it's not a verbiage change, it's a going to change.
This is definitely a zoning change, before, I think they were just trying to change the language of the ordinance and take out the cumulative aspect. Now, what we're trying to do is create our own zoning structure, which is completely different.
So, it's still taking away, you know, possibilities to do with your property. So I, I want to know if at some point we will have a public type hearing, just opened up to the town, to come in and voice their opinion and how it will affect them.
Yes.
Okay, hundred percent.
I, I believe, um, any, any zoning change to ordinance requires a public hearing.
Okay. So that did with the.
Um, I did not think so, like, find that email, but I haven't, I asked that question to, or threes about what that would look like if, for example, we changed a property that, uh, was using their, their parcel different than what we're changing it to, so I have that.
My thought isn't even that, that we decided his grandfather did, it could still be sold as that and used as that.
Correct.
But mine is, okay, I bought this property and in the next five years, I'm gonna put duplexes on, and I can right now, but, oh, wait, now it's commercial, I can't do it right now. So now I've bought this with one intent to put this money into it, and now I can't do what I want.
Oh, and there, there's always going to be the process to change the zoning, and they would come to you to do that. So.
And again, we'll go back to that, on that spot zoning then, and we can't do that because.
Right. That's very, that's very true.
Oh, sure.
I mean, but I think each, each scenario would be very circumstantial on where it is and if it makes sense, I mean, there's a lot of properties in Odessa that are zoned commercial that are housing multi-family. So if one of those came to you guys and wanted to be, wanted to use it for multi-family, but it's zoned commercially, um, if all of the neighbors are multi-family, then it would be logical to allow for that.
Right.
So. And within the zoning, um, use table, it's like what we're seeing around here, before, they were trying to take, take that away, is my understanding, take away that clause that lets it stop. So then, it, it did create complete silos between what's in R one is in R one, and that's all you can do once in R two. It, it created those silos where this is a more fluid between, fluid document between the different silos, if you will, or different zoning districts, so, um, that, that exact example. Steve, we fill that out for multi-family? Yep. So we, what we have in there for right now, what we previously discussed, is allowing that in R three, and then it's allowed in C one, C two, or C, C three conditionally. So, but you have this, right now, this creation moment that we're in, we have the ability to say, okay, well, multi-family could be in C one permitted, and you don't have to come to this board to ask for permission. But I don't, I don't necessarily think that we should peel out in all of them. Just part of it.
So eventually, once we get through all this, somebody will look at the, the map?
Hmm.
And try to make some sense out of it?
Well, they would, you would have a completed table, um, so like if you look at Lexington, for example, you would have a completed table to be able to know, this is what my use is, this is, this is where I'm able to do that use. Or vice versa, this is what it's zoned as, and these are all the uses I'm allowed to do. Thoughts? You're thinking.
I think, I, I don't know, this, to me, this is really confusing. Well, uh, how much is this going to change? Would we, this, or will this change at all?
Well, so you've got two different things happening, ones, that is a snapshot of what each parcel is zoned as static wise, just one like that's what it's zoned as. The other is what you're able to use within that zone. So if all the red ones are commercial, this is going to tell you what can be done in commercial. What can, what you can use your red parcel at.
Do you know how much that is own? You know, since, since we could pretty well do whatever we want to, as long as we keep going up.
Hmm.
Currently, do we know what, uh, if we, if we change the definition of that zone, do we know how much that's going to affect?
In reality, it wouldn't affect anything, it would not change that map until you're trying to do something different with your property later. I mean, it wouldn't, it would, it would still be a commercially zoned parcel.
Right, but if you.
And if you're doing this and it's on that.
Commercially zone, if you have a house that.
If that, if you full does that house, you did not build a new house. I don't think, well, let me confirm that with the attorney, but I don't, that, that's that email that I was looking for, where she listed out the different timeframes when a zoning change would be required. And I don't even know if it was sent, if, if the house, I, I don't want to use a hypothetical, ignore that.
There was something about if a tornado or something took it down, you had so many days to have permit and start a process of redoing.
And once, still, that's how it is now too, yeah.
So you could rebuild the house?
I think so.
Maybe. I mean, there is. That's how it is now, no matter what we change or do.
Right.
We just had that come up with house fires, you have X amount of timeframe to begin work, but doesn't stay a, you know, a has, safety hazard lot forever. The other thing we have to consider too is the new category we've now added to this table, which would be the P U D. And what type of uses could use a P U D? And what type of uses could use a P U D?
The only other question. I I not really a question, I just need. Little clarification, where we said uh, it could be, you know, uh. A group home, you know, can be put into a C one category. It's conditional. What? We make up the conditions whenever it comes to this or?
It just means that it has to come before you first.
That's all the points, it's just that it has to come here.
It's where, so like in our current code, that's where it's saying uh, use is permitted upon review.
Okay.
Would that be like the boundary home or the bowl home or anything like that? Do you want?
Depending on, we didn't fill that one out, so we didn't actually put anything on that, or at least my opinion doesn't come out. But that would be for you guys to determine.
Okay.
If that should be conditionally approved by you, use a use permitted upon review, or if it is allowed to be. Constructed without any. Approvals. Why don't we, why don't we just do a few in uh. Let's start, let's go into uh, we did quite a few, really.
Didn't we decide going on most of these, on most of these things are all. Be under review or have to be approved or something like that, so next this year, it's not gonna be rock solid.
I mean, you can put under review on every single one of them if you wanted to, but that's gonna be um. Kind of a roadblock for development in Odessa, if you you wanna think about how many things you're requiring your approval for. Because it's an extra step for the developer to be able to build in Odessa.
But then they got to submit to a plan for what we're gonna, what they're gonna do, they're gonna have to approve them too.
For sure, but it's, it can be kind of uh, it can, it can just slow down pro- progress a little bit because. For example, you guys only meet once a month, so. You know, but you have to kind of line up your 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 schedule, the developer schedule with the planning and zoning schedule, if there's more than one. Approval that they need to come to you for, so that's another, you know.
That that's my idea, right, that makes me, that makes, uh, very cool, thank you.
That's the three monthly meetings they have to go to for planning and zoning versus one or two. Okay, so let's think through. Well, let's just go through something then, um, a funeral, I'm gonna skip flex type cuz I can't remember what that is off the top of my head. I don't have the definitions here. Okay, funeral home. So, where, where could you guys? Where does it make sense for a funeral home to be able to be? Infected.
And right now, it's where, in our.
Right now, it would be likely commercial. You have the map, actually, I know you can see, let me see.
Yep, it should be commercial. I think it might actually have been. No, yeah, I think it's commercial. This is Casey's, so it's gonna be here, right? That's C two?
C two currently. So. Do you think that it makes sense for it to be in R one, R two, or R three? No. So, definitely C one. C two. And C three. C three is highway commercial district, so. Yeah. C three?
Yeah.
Yes. And industrial.
Yeah.
Could go in industrial?
I think so.
Yeah, I don't know whether I heard one lady else, I mean, industrial, I mean, I'm.
I think this is the business yet though.
I could see it going into some of the spaces that we have that are some industrial.
True. Maybe I one, but not I two. Or.
Maybe I two is conditional.
What about a golf course?
Very agricultural, a lot.
Mm-hmm.
She'd need the space.
It'd have to be C two.
To C three maybe.
We say on a golf course.
Uh, agricultural.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it have to change from?
From agriculture to commercial.
Or.
Something like that, yeah, yeah, we're not thinking.
If if you guys are saying it can be permitted in ours, then. If it's zoned, the only time you have to change it then is if they permitted, if it's on, they're wanting to do it on a parcel that's residential. Then they would need to change it from residential to ag or commercial.
Yeah, so basically, it'd be like the Hill projects, if they decided they wanted to be a golf course. They'd have to change that to commercial.
Or ag.
Yeah.
But when they play in a golf course, that's what's the parks department. Parks department playing golf course. Then probably would be housing around it. But if it fell, but played in, but you have to sell housing around golf course. Yes, you.
Or the.
Yeah, you're right, that's, isn't it, that's plenty, R one. Yeah.
But then would it fall into a more of a. And type development.
I don't think I would consider it to be a putt, it depends, I guess it would depend on if. The houses are being built on the parcel that is also the golf course or less.
They would sell them around the ball.
That's true.
So, and then actually a clubhouse on top of them too, so, yeah.
Then if they sold the golf course at Safford House, then they'd have to change it again, I mean, it made R one, R two, right, but. That happened at Blue Springs, they sold a golf course, built a house. So, you'd have to change it because it no longer be agricultural.
Well, P U D would make a lot of sense there.
Could that just be a B F D?
Mm-hmm.
All the way around, not played in any zone?
Yeah, we could, yeah, I would say probably ag or P U D now the C one through. C two, C three is the part that's questioning, is coming up is maybe odd now.
But I think that's with houses, if it's just a straight golf course.
Yeah.
I think that'd be two separate things.
And this is just golf course.
Yeah, I think we would need to add a separate category for uh.
P U D with residence.
Yeah, a neighborhood, yeah, a neighborhood with a golf course or. A neighborhood with a separate. Its own park or something large scale like that.
Okay. All right, the next one is government services.
Well, can we put the golf course in industrial too?
Yeah. You guys think golf course and industrial, the thing is with a golf course is you need a lot of acreage and to build one in town is. Very unlikely. So, would likely pop up in in outskirts. Area, so. Which is. Could could be any of them. Could maybe, I could.
Do you want to decide on, just go, of course, it's gonna be agricultural then?
I've got under ag, commercial, and then do we want it in industrials?
Should we go with C one, C two? R one?
Yes, I mean, thought, let's see what other cities are at their size. And uh, it's, it's really could go anywhere. Like, there's an argument that I could go when you have. Okay, so last one ten. They have their golf course slash club listed under uh. Ag only. And then permitted upon review in R one, R two, and highway.
What was that now?
So, they they allow it in ag and only ag.
Right.
And then they have it upon review for R one, R two, and highway commercial.
The golf course?
Mm-hmm.
See, like Higginsville has theirs as golf course public. So, they actually kind of break it down. So, I think it's got private golf courses too.
Yeah.
But they have theirs in all their residential and ag. Do they have golf courses? Shoot, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so, I think they do.
Yeah.
That's probably, they probably throw her down for the cap.
What was your question?
Higginsville has golf course.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe.
Is it private?
Yeah.
Private.
So, I I think from my knowledge of Columbia and some of those places, I think having it in residence that's on the pretty common. Has its kind of thought of. Like a. It's recreation. No, like this saying, that is also how how great it's coming cuz it's bigger land and it's still land.
Oh.
Yeah, that's why I handed that to you. Cuz that's all, it gives us a lot more to think about.
They don't have golf course, so they have miniature golf and dri- driving range. They don't have regular golf course.
Wouldn't any, wouldn't anything, wouldn't anything exactly a business? Have to start with C O, then that's in the golf course, because that's that lot of land, everything else can have the commercial. I think you can't put an R one, R two, R three, if you're making money on it in business.
Well, I think we have to think of it a little bit more so about what we think it should be next to as opposed to what it would. What it would need to be, you know what I mean? So, do you want a golf course? You know, next to manufacturing company, or do you want a golf course next to homes, or do you want a golf course next to Taco Bell?
Well, as long as it's a good statue, to make the golf course nice, you'd wanna build houses around it, sure, but if it's some kind of dog, then you wouldn't want it, so I mean. I mean, I see what you're getting at, normally you would think you'd wanna build a nice homes around it, it'd be a nice thing.
I kind of, my opinion is that I think it would go ag, uh, residential. And then the rest would be upon review and then P U D. What do you guys think?
I don't see them, but yeah, they are.
And I think it. I don't see why it couldn't go in R three either.
So, what you were telling me there about miniature golf.
Miniature golf.
Driving ranges, like.
I think they would.
A place like Top Golf, but driving range.
I would.
And then you can stick, they stick top, Top Golf. In little anywhere.
Yeah, that's true.
Or you gotta think about the driving range right outside of Blue Springs, right, the Port Green Valley over there by the hotel, that's just a driving range.
Right off, I said, during.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's a golf course here too. I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, I think back on that there, but I mean, that driving range specifically sits right there and they put the big nets up and.
Which is.
That's very far away, what you talking about, yeah.
Maybe where your highway commercial comes into play.
Yeah.
So, that's true, that would be C three. Okay. And if you're, if it's an attraction like that, you would want it to have highway access to draw in other people. Like miniature golf, you know, that would draw in families from a lot of places to come and do miniature golf. We'd want it easily accessible. Okay. Moving on to. Government services. So, this could be a city, it could be county, it could be library. It could be.
Federal.
Federal.
Since I went to federal recruiting office and.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I would say all Cs.
All Cs.
Yeah, C down, even in the industrial.
In industrial or not in industrial?
Okay, in industrial.
At least, wouldn't a fire station be a government facility?
It would.
True, true.
I mean, in theory, you you your fire stations, as they pop up, they're, you know, supposed to be spread out with coverage, which. Puts them in residential, but I think that's kind of a one off from. A community building or um, community center or administrative office.
So, can we just make that conditional then? Like, if we wanted to think of that, like.
Is there any, is there any state or federal statute, you can, in certain population, they have their. Fire sta- I know you have to have fireplug in so many feet, I would have. Sound you, maybe you have to have so many fire stations, so.
It comes down to their I S O rates. So, if there's a certain number of population, they'll start saying that they want more coverage. Uh, for you to keep your, your I S O, which keeps everybody's insurance down. But it's not like a universal liquor station now.
So, what am I looking at? Lexington has theirs actually split ambulance service, city hall, courthouse, fire station, police station. But they're all permitted the same, C one. It's allowed in all in commercial. On review in residential one, residential two, and upon review it in highway commercial. And it's allowed in R one.
That sounds good.
Yeah, you're gonna say that, that makes more sense, any of them.
R one and R two upon review.
You got, you got the elementary school, the paper says that.
Mm-hmm.
They're looking at replacing that building. So, there'll be a new building there, it's that, be solid. That's gonna be hard one, I would say, you know, I don't know. For right on that neighborhood.
They would, yeah, I would think would be that, very sound that way, I've been up.
What?
I can do with this school.
This is all.
It's gonna stay school.
Well, my. I just think, is like, if this is what I had, is that my back, or no, this is. R three?
Something, yeah, yeah, that building.
Right, I I think they're looking at future.
The school's already.
Either pieces of, we don't know, you build on the property, something, you know, that's something.
Yeah.
They, they're not thinking of it as a higher.
You don't worry, you don't like that, it should all, you know.
At least, I think he was.
Yeah.
I just. Okay, they just have their governmental administration, but they're, they're worried, so. Okay, they just have their governmental administration, but they're, they're worried, so.
There, there's gotta be like, yeah, so.
So many.
So, so big, so, you know.
There's also thinking about what they have in the golf course that we were talking about.
Does a jail fall under government? I think so, I think that's listed separately.
Jail prison or cells within the police station.
Like I remember seeing, yeah, correctional facilities listed separately.
Now that a correction facility is privatized or a government.
I can pull it up on, on here if you wanna look at.
We have to define it.
I, I, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
I pull up on the laptop.
We maybe drill down some of these.
Well, we can, but we can define the, define that a little bit more with the definitions, once we get to that one.
I don't think government services necessarily need to go in R one and R two.
Yeah.
But depending on what it is as well.
But it's upon, it would be upon review.
Yeah.
And I think that's where you get into the coverage of emergency services and, you know, as your community grows. You know, it could grow really far east or really far, one, you know, one direction, and then your, your fire station one doesn't make sense anymore. And we're not able to get to. Residents that are, are extended beyond, then you have a need for another one, but that need could be in her, in residential area.
Yeah.
But, like, where's, like, admin- administration, you know?
Yeah, that's hard.
The Department of Transportation or whatever admin office doesn't need to be in R one.
Yeah.
So. Okay, next, we've got health clubs. And I think, I think that way, that's considering gyms of any sort. Because it says clo- club, I think of that a little bit more membership base, but. You so, you kind of definition, that I don't have one.
Yeah.
A facility where members or non-members use equipment or space for the purpose of physical exercise.
So any of the Cs in I one?
Yeah, yeah. For, for me, I would mean. Would it technically also need to go into R three, for like a big apartment complex that could have a gym?
Yeah. I could see that.
This is right. This is right.
And this, what is that, cause I'm, that's that gray color.
It's a, the dark.
Yeah.
It's, it's R three.
Oh, that's weird.
And then the light blue, this is white, but it's supposed to be light blue, it's just real light.
Yeah.
And, um. That's the I two.
So, it's like Oak Grove has health clubs in C one to C one and up.
At C one and what you think?
C one and up, all the way to I two.
I would think all of them are going to be C one and up to some degree, I mean, you're all businesses, you're gonna put them on R one, two, or three, or I can imagine.
Well, thing, the thing we have to think about with industrial, I mean, that can get pretty massive pretty quickly. So there's some C ones that may not make sense next to a, you know, a giant warehouse manufacturing company that's building. Massive things, I don't know what. But, you know, it may not make sense, that's gonna be loud, there's gonna be a lot of truck traffic, semi-traffic, things like that, where it may not make sense that that's.
I guess the plan was there before the other, but thank the difference, then if you went, you know, I mean, one, all the truck traffic, you could, like, you would have built the other, that's good, yeah, that makes, yeah.
It's probably nice to have a restaurant by that big manufacturing facility.
Exactly, a restaurant's a great example, and go have Italian dinner.
C one, C two, and C three, C one, C two, C three.
For which, for which?
For, uh.
Elbow.
Yeah, the club.
Yes, I wrote down C one, C two, C three, and I one.
And you.
But not necessarily I two. Okay?
So wouldn't it maybe wanna go with an R three? So that you can get a, a club closer in towards. You know, so your residential area, you know, like, if you wanted to say like a Genesis Health Club or something. You know, I'm not saying put it right next to my house, but, you know.
In R three, that would send them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, yeah, they are.
It could be upon review, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would work.
You have a big apartment complex, Jeff.
Yeah.
So like when we're talking about these like this, like you was just saying, an apartment complex, obviously they have their gyms and such in there, but. When you come in and you wanna build an apartment complex, you're not breaking down every piece of that apartment complex is what you're putting in there.
No.
So it's.
This would be, this used to be for standalone, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I would more be like an apartment complex with like a Genesis. Like next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, and Genesis would probably be interested in that because you have all those customers right there, if it's a larger.
You don't really want them, though, they don't get their bills, it would affect us.
Okay, now we have. Two fifty, but now we have helipad. Or heliport. Airport.
Yeah, airport's on the page before, under public, quite like public and commercial use.
So these are more.
Oh, there's.
Privatized helipads. Or like, uh.
We put, previously, we put airport under I two only.
I mean, yeah.
I think we should move for the next one, hospital.
And so where that is.
Yeah, cause we'll.
But they could operate independently.
Kind of like the one off that I said will do down there.
Mm-hmm.
Look, somebody go to hospital, they have that group, so.
Well, or like saying, there is about.
And that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be your primary use either, so your primaries would be hogs.
Well, like, we have. Cause they had a. Uh, drones. I don't know, where do drones fit, you know?
Well, I don't know, I don't know that we would have drones that are large enough to meet a, a pad necessarily.
I don't know, I guess that's, that's definition enough. Now, put your initials down, bud.
An area either on the ground or on a building, used as a landing pad for helicopters to pick up or discharge passengers or cargo. But it would have, its primary use would have to be helipad for it to be categorized, it's like. So.
So probably industrial.
Well, my thought on that though is, so when I used to work for Centrally. We had. Private helipads, obviously, we, this is in Colorado, but up on mountains and such, they were our own private helipads.
Mm-hmm.
Now. You can build those and get an FCC landing spot and everything. So how would that? Fit into our.
Maybe it's facing to be permitted I one, I two, but. Conditionally in your.
In ag, I would say it would be permitted because a lot of times you're crop testers, you know, they're not just using fixed wing, but they'll also use helicopters, crop test. I never see a whole lot of crop testing around. Us, but.
You'd see, like, we didn't want like to have a helicopter, yeah.
Well, I necessarily would put it conditionally in R one now.
True.
And I don't.
Initially in C one and C two and three.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right? Then we have hospital.
I'd say it'd be in everything but R one, two, or three.
So. Oak Grove has it conditionally in C one and C two.
Affirmative, or allow it in. Commercial areas.
All, all of, all of the commercial areas, C one, two, and three?
No, so why not, I mean, how, yeah, you could end up getting, you know, your own children's mercy out here, if you got a property.
So.
Something like that.
To help us kind of recruit for that.
You could place the other mall.
Sure, you know, with. You want your space, and they have their own helipad.
Yeah. What about R three for hospital?
What about what?
R three?
I think conditionally.
Wouldn't that be kind of like how Saint Mary's incident, cause like, the other side of them is. All the residentials there, and.
Yeah, that's the one in Blue Springs, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you can be, that, uh, nursing homes. Or.
It's like convalescent. It's all, it's all.
We've got, yeah, I think it is.
Convalescent care.
We have assisted living too, and by force.
So the reason why I think Oak Grove has some, is just, you know, almost commercial, because hospitals are all water truck. So it's everywhere that we have commercial setup for that traffic. Ambulances in and out.
And I just need, we gotta upgrade our infrastructure.
No, they act.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if you wanna come in here, you gotta widen the road. Add some stoplights.
That's true.
Actually out.
And that's from conditions.
Yeah.
Okay. Hotel or motel, this is, this is about one, this, we need one, need a hotel.
I definitely wouldn't want to in any residential.
I'm saying R three potentially conditionally.
Well, yeah, I mean. Yeah, cause you could, you could put one next to a apartment complex. Like that.
I know we could find hotel, cause there, there's kind of a size, and you've got bed and breakfast size and then hotel size. Hotel size.
That's actually really good, it's bed and breakfast program separately here, that's, we have an older farmhouse that someone wanted to. Do a bed and breakfast in.
Yeah.
I guess you.
You also.
Why could you were?
Also have the home occupation rule thing where we can't really. Regulate businesses within private homes. Um. So. A facility used to maintain their advert- advertises, a place where sleeping accommodations in rooms without individual kitchens are supplied for short-term rent to transient guests. Typical uses include hotels and motels.
Just long-term stay hotels.
Not accounted for.
That is growing up, I think, market. It's not endless.
Yeah, cause if we got, say, a big, uh. Manufacturing plant out here, or a big tech plant, they often bring people in for months at a time.
Mm-hmm.
On contract, or even hotel, or, uh, not hotels, even hospitals will bring in travelers for.
Well, you think that those should, short-term and long-term should be categorized in the same zones, cause we could add that to the definition, revise that definition to include. Long-term stays as well. Another problem that we have in this whole mix is that we haven't addressed is, uh. Like Airbnbs.
But then doesn't that go back to the privatized and home.
True. True.
Situation.
Okay. We'll, we'll dress that in a different ordinance.
That's hard, is there anything in the city?
For.
The Airbnb.
Not today, we don't have anything, a lot of other cities are putting in ordinance to help regulate that, but, uh, we don't have it right now.
I thought we had something where they had to be in a type of commercial, because. Thought it was included.
I don't think so.
Our license is tired, I'm guessing.
Mm-hmm.
So you can't really control it.
It's a bed and breakfast, it was listed as a bed and breakfast, it had to be in a commercial area, it couldn't be in a residential.
Yeah, and I thought, it's, maybe I am wrong about this, but is a bed and breakfast and an Airbnb different? Because to me, an Airbnb is like you're renting out your home, where bed and breakfast is.
Yeah.
Your home is your business, and you have multiple rooms and.
Well, there's a couple of different ways of Airbnb's though.
Yeah, yeah.
Friend of mine, she rents out her mountain home, but she still lives there.
True.
But guests will come in and use like the bottom. Level, you know, or they can rent the whole house, or they can rent, you know, bedroom two, or.
And you also have the opposite problem too, where some Airbnbs, people are buying homes to only Airbnb them.
Right, then that is, that's completely a business.
I think that has to be addressed in its, its own prior, cause it's pretty monkey, but.
People are doing that with apartments too, renting out apartments, or renting out apartment to rent it out.
Yeah. Okay, so hotel or motel, in the traditional sense, and we might have to address the definition a little bit. But. In the traditional sense of like. Uh. Holiday Inn Express, or something like that.
I think agriculture. Definitely highway and industrial one.
I think we have to be a little bit careful when it comes to agriculture, because. It's like, in theory, it's the most restrictive use today, so if we're adding more and more, and it takes out that element.
I think in the Cs and light industrial.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I could do with that.
Now, is it the hotel and motel?
Okay. And that's probably one I could, I could definitely see a P U D coming in with, with a hotel. Could be like a shopping center with a hotel or whatever. Um, kennel. Now, this one, from experience, this one comes up more often than you think. That could be, um, it ki- it's kind of more of the a- a definition problem, but. You know, what quantifies as a kennel, today in our ordinance, that only refers to dogs, countless, right? Mm-hmm. So. You got cat kennel, you could have a.
Birds.
Bird sanctuary kennel, I don't know, but. Or.
People got some really weird animals anymore around here.
The other, the other side of that is, is a kennel just for. Like.
Yeah.
Housing, temporary housing or permanent housing, does it include breeding, does it not include breeding? Where it gets a little clunky.
That's a dog, they're gonna have to break down.
Daycare, dog daycare, does that count as a kennel?
And, uh, then you gotta start going like, does it, like, domesticated animals, you know, can't be bringing in a lemur.
So, that's true, defines it as an esthetic. defines it as an establishment licensed to operate a facility housing dogs. Cats or other household pets. And where grooming, breeding, boarding, training, or selling of animals is conducted is a business. That is a much better definition than our current definition of the kennel. That would help us out a lot.
Yeah.
Because it does address breeding, selling, boarding, so daycare, grooming. And then it's purely for domestic animals and not lemurs. Okay, so where would we anticipate a kennel being allowed?
Very far away from homes.
That's a good point.
I've got three mastiffs direct beside it in a little six by six. And he never cleans their cage whatsoever. And it's a mast.
Might need to tell Coogs about that.
Okay, where is it? The that cereal.
Okay, so definitely not in R one, R two or R three.
I don't even like C one.
No C one. No, there's no C one. So you've got to go back to we've got light commercial. What's C two call?
C two includes their downtown right now.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you sort of like Oak Grove, you got Oak Grove Animal Clinic right down there on Broadway or Main Street, wherever.
I'd consider that five way commercial or.
Yeah.
One option.
And then. If you look at the one in Blue Springs, that's off of the uh outer roads and that'd be highway.
Big Cities is on forty ninth way. So highway commercial. General commercial.
I think a general is conditional. They would really just need to determine what's around, because do you want a kennel next to the restaurant?
No.
Yeah.
Let a grooming place.
No. I one.
Oh, yeah.
I two. Yes.
Yeah.
Massage establishment and bathhouse.
We have the massages.
C two. Do we have more than one massage establishment?
They're both downtown now.
Well, we have the therapist out there um at Park Park Lane out there. Then it's for oh, I can't. Yeah, cross from there. Can't think what it's called. I mean, he's a he's a psychotherapist and she is a. So that would husband wife team.
That would all be C three out there. Day spa.
Yeah.
So that's C two and C three.
Nice to have down here.
Highway.
Little spa place, highway access, but then even for down Second Street. And you know, you take one of the. Older buildings and. I give a wrong clue.
So uh C two and C three. Can't find that.
Which one?
We have a definite.
Yes, because they require us to be completely non-physical. Tattoo parlors, massage places, bathhouses. And a couple of things that require uh C V K.
Noted. Let's see what Lexington does.
We might also. It's kind of the old school thing where people required those permits on anything that is kind of seen as. Something they might not want and whereas massage therapy is something that's much more common now.
True.
But not uh stigmatized in a way that. I think there was a reaction to massage parlors earlier that went to the over reading of what that might be.
Oh my god.
Sounds pretty deal.
Well, yeah, the fact that it says bathhouse.
Yeah.
That's not really a modern term.
Yeah.
I don't see that.
So they possibly have the same tech codes.
Which is not really searchable. Oh, there it is. It's under healthcare facilities. They allow it under it's listed as massage shop slash parlor. And it's in C two, C three and C four. I don't know why they have so many. They have five commercial districts in Lexington.
Do they have a little bit of definition?
Of the commercial districts?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've read it somewhere. I haven't even looked in. And they have neighborhood commercial district, general commercial district. Central commercial district or central business district, office commercial district and highway commercial. Which is in reality, that's the that extras that we have, the commercial, the Casey seven.
That's the CRT.
The CRT, that's neighborhood commercial district. We have highway and then if you put in a central business district, that's your downtown. We did a overlay or something for downtown only. Then we would have four. Five, no, we have five, so. There's that. We're in same boat. Okay, where were we? Massage establishments and bathhouses. They allow that in. C two, C three, C four, which would be general, central and office. To me, in the modern concept of it. Goes back to highway like. I think I think any of the Cs would make sense because you're gonna want it accessible. It 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 can bring in people from other areas. You don't want them to have to travel too far, you know, to get to it. And you don't want it next to. A manufacturing place. So.
I don't think you didn't leave someone at all.
In the world.
Well, there are. There's like Russian bathhouses and.
Oh, okay.
And I think you can even consider like um a bathhouse as like. Uh after like someone goes to gym, a lot of athletes will be going to a bathhouse for like the cold plunges and. Different things like that, you know, or there's like the Chinese bathhouses where they'll scrub you down and like often so. I know all kinds of random knowledge on the show. TikTok has taught me a lot. You learn about all kinds of things.
Okay. Next one. I wrote that that for C one, C two, C three. Next on the list is. Medical marijuana. We have like a whole ordinance on that, so.
We had quite a discussion about it. You were going.
Yeah. There's there's a lot of ordinance in our in our code regulating medical marijuana, so I want to make sure that we're not. Changing something within that ordinance. We'll come back to that. Medical services. Defined as. A use providing therapeutic preventative or corrective. Personal treatment services in an outpatient basis by physicians, dentists. And other practitioners of the medical or healing arts. And the provision of medical testing and analysis services. Typical uses include clinics and offices for doctors of medicine, dentists, chiropractors. Um osteopaths, opto. Ophthalmics, um blood banks and medical laboratories. They're different than hospitals.
Let's see one to C three.
Yeah, I was gonna say where you've been into I if you're going into uh the last thing you should talk about. If you could even. We got a client out in a. They summon. They're huge lab. Out there like they are like a six building. It's a whole complex. So.
Might get into larger industrial.
Yeah.
I two. That would be cool. Permitted or upon review? In I two.
I say that we would want to probably review that, you know. See what.
Is this one that maybe P U D could go for that too?
Possibly, because they like this complex out there has like its own little dining facility. It has basketball courts.
Okay. I put it conditionally I two and I put it in P U D. Um skipping micro business dispensary facility for now. Next is military service. Which probably is going to be somewhat similar to their government service.
I like your recruiting station.
Yeah.
What you say recruiting? Yeah, I started thinking.
So probably C one. Where else?
Which one was behind?
Military service.
I C two them too.
C two.
Why would that fall under the? The one we had earlier with the government.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, I guess good.
Yeah.
I guess good part on that that's very.
I think the difference is like if it was like a National Guard or something that came in. Like you're gonna have, there could be like weapons training and things like that.
Have to go in industrial.
Yeah. I think that's the biggest difference. Which is not super far that should I think.
Somebody had to write a brand for that.
A facility used or intended to be used by the branch of the US Armed Forces, including military service.
So like a Marine.
Yep. So C C one, two I two or?
I feel like that's gonna be a large facility, like any of the areas that I've ever been in are pretty large, so I.
I think it would be, I think it would almost need approval in C one or C two. Because of its potential to be large in size.
I think you would need to go C three permitted to I one, I two.
So conditionally for all Cs, is that what you're saying? What did she say?
I think conditionally for C one and C two permitted and C three and then I permitted I one and I two.
Okay, that's what. You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do five more minutes till eight thirty and then. Call it. Sound good? Okay. Uh mobile home sales. Okay.
I would say at least C three, I one, because you're gonna need space definitely.
I almost feel like it could be conditional on C one and C two if they just wanted like an office. And then like they were gonna drag people out to like the showhouse or whatever.
Yeah, but they might just put an office in and put you in a business and you talk about a mobile home, so they're gonna have to set trailers or something. They're gonna say, oh, you're gonna have to see.
C three and one and two.
Conditionly in C one and C two or or not permitted or C one and C two.
I would put it C one and C two.
I would put it conditionally.
Really? What if we split the difference and do conditionally in C one and not in C two? Not permitted in C, no, I said it backwards. Conditionally in C two, not permitted in C one.
Yeah.
Modeling studio and body painting. This is probably. Trying to fall under the like what Hannah was saying about like tattoos parlors and. Um stuff like that. That might go and like be the same concern as a tattoo facility. Modeling. Modeling studio and body painting. This came from Oak Grove. Let's see what it says. Oh, I took it out of the definitions. Cause like that's crazy ten. I went to think about it. I think you could, if you're gonna. Have it, I think it could be defined under like tattoo. Piercings, body painting. I don't know about modeling.
What should it be modification too? Cause like even like some tattoo artists or piercers do like the implants and stuff.
Yeah. Body modification. I don't know about modeling. The main of modeling is is almost like photography, like photography studio that you could really do. In C one.
Yeah.
Do we have to define every possible?
Be modeling agency, but that still doesn't make any sense. Something illicit.
I took the definition out because I thought it was so crazy. I go from.
Wouldn't all this stuff be under review to some degree? That one, I mean, good lord, there's a jillion different scenario.
Yeah, I think if modeling comes up, we it would seem you can come to the come to the board maybe. There's there is a jillion. That's the problem with this whole thing.
Yeah.
You could do anything like someone could. I don't know. There's just.
I'll ask them if they're meeting or speak, if any of them know what that means.
But the but the theory is you wanna try to address as many what ifs as possible.
I could keep telling before, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
To prevent the. If a business is coming in, they're gonna be like, oh, there's modeling studio. I know I should be here. But if it's not there, then they're like, hmm, maybe I should go to a different town because I know I can do modeling in that town.
You also don't want to create. Say, oh, we're doing this.
Why can't you see a dance studio or something offering something like that for kids with passions and things like that?
Yeah.
I mean, but yeah, but this was hard to nail things to say.
Right.
Well, I mean, what was the?
Our photography.
Photography place back in the nineties that people.
Lever shot.
Yeah, the modelers.
I love seeing.
I love seeing this picture.
Okay, let's do one more office general.
What did we decide on the body, body painting and?
I took out modeling and then I made a note to say define this under tattoos. And then tattoos, I think, is a category.
But we're gonna leave it defined under tattoo and then not put it in.
Tattoo parlors and body piercings is a different category.
Okay, so we're not gonna make it C one, R two, three, nothing like that.
Well, we could, we could right now say where we think.
Just under review?
Where, where would you put tattoo parlors and body piercings and body painting? Yeah, I think we can plug that into the definition.
That also falls into sometimes in a of them, that falls into medical procedures in some places. Depending on what kind of body modification you're doing, you know, like.
We might, we might put something about being licensed. A licensed tattoo modification parlor, yada, yada.
Yeah, my TikTok's for this too. Very eclectic, uh. Oh, what do they call that, algorithm? I go from one side to the other and go all over the place.
I've learned so much, I'm like.
I'm trying to get some plugs off my car and have a split from this time to the rest of the.
Well, I don't have a definition for tattoo parlors, but we know what they are. So where would we allow tattoo parlors and body piercings and body anything?
Have anybody doing that in town?
Yeah, there's one over by Subway.
Park Lane.
C three, it'd be, Park Lane is all C three, like that's Spring Street and all that. That's all C three, so by subway would also, oh, no, subway is C two. And then we have it in the downtown too, which is also C two.
Yeah, and I, I think there's, is there, is there a new one? I know they came in and looked at it.
I don't know.
There was the one with that by the grocery store.
Yeah, that's Park Lane, that one's there.
That is Park Lane.
I don't wanna stay trying and give them a little more wiggle room. I mean, get, give them more opportunity. Because tattooing and stuff is huge.
Business, big business, yeah.
They not willing to do anything about that, but.
You don't have one, do you?
Okay, so for sure, C one. Permitted in C one.
Well, some people get tattoos out of their homes too, today, yeah.
That's the other massage person.
C two, C, C one, C two, C three.
The C one, C two and C three, is that what you did?
Yeah, anywhere else. Industrial.
I almost feel like I want them to be able to tattoo out of their home if they wanted to.
Well, we wouldn't be able to really. Their home would, their homes primarily use residential or single family, so that's what it.
Health inspected tattoo parlors and stuff.
Okay, all right, so light industrial.
Yeah, so.
You could even go down as far as like in part three, so you can have one or round.
Yeah, I think that would kind of go into, you you get into businesses unless you're saying that it could be allowed in the residential. Like an apartment, like what we're saying with the apartment, you know, I don't really think. Then you just have commercial being resident.
Be more of a P U D for like an apartment with like shopping and everything, right?
Okay, I think that's good for now, um. I would just try to do as much as you can, I know it's a lot, but try to do what you can. If you wanna send me, do as far as, and then send me what you have, like the week before the, or. Week and a half before the meeting, and I can try to compile as much as possible, but. Unless you have questions or if you have definition questions, you don't know what something means. You should have the same definitions packet, but, um. I don't know why I omitted some. I, I remember omitting them, now I don't remember, cause that was a long time ago, so. Okay, um, any else, any questions, thoughts, concerns? Hey, treat, I'll make notes and stop.
So next, my name is Andy Mady, it's eighth of September, you'll let us know whether we change time from. All right, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. All in favor? Anybody wanna stay here?
Make sure you turn your microphones off.